Mr. Lee Walton, could you prepare this?
Here is it, sir.
All right, this is perfect. I've already said a few more, just tell them.
The process is from the understanding, or as I understand it, is we're going, do we have to go back through the, does this have to go back?
As far as I know, once y'all get to the point of you're satisfied with everything, then we advertise, go through the public hearing process, the planning commission board of commissioners.
Okay.
And it's not to say you can't have a work session where you let other people talk, but, public hearing wise, two.
First, Georgia's own procedures law, we need two public hearings before adoption, which is what's commonly referred to as first and second.
That's what ours is.
Now, we have had a public, we have had two public hearings, technically, planning commission and the most recent meeting, so.
But that was, that was closed.
That was closed.
They closed, they took action on it to deny it.
That's right.
So, that's why, that's why it's the question of.
Right.
Would you plan on reading the table?
Right.
So that we can.
Got it.
So, what I have organized here for tonight, Mr. Chairman, it's okay if we may not, as I see it, our process, very simply and straightforward, is to first confirm the scope of the factors that we need to address, then get into the substance of them and determine what edits need to be made, then we'll make those edits, produce the revised unified development code, revised final, revised final, final revised final, and then that will go through the formal process that we were discussing. So, what I've organized here tonight is not yet recommendations on what to change or how to change anything, or what language to use, but it's, as you'll see, A through E headings that describe what we anticipate to be the scope of the updates that we need to make based on the public comments that we receive. So, that's how I'm going to approach reviewing this document. And then the question to you first will be, do you agree that this covers the scope of what we need to address, or do we need to add more items to the checklist, that was question number one? And then, you know, any discussions that we want to have under these headings at this point will help, me and us and us on the phone listening in here, will help us understand the nature of changes that we need to make. And then we'll go to our own proposed wording for text changes to address the factors that we need to address, and then we'll bring that back to you, provide that to you for review before we meet again, I think we'll be in a position where, assuming we can get through these three pages this evening, provide something for you to review and react to, and then we can discuss it at the next meeting. And I don't think we have a schedule yet for the next meeting, or do we have a data set? We don't have data set yet, yeah. So, I think it makes more sense for us to talk, get your input confirmation, this is our checklist, then we propose, I think we send that to you, you have a chance to review them and review them and discuss it, if that works for you.
There is one thing that's not on here, and that is the discussion of, we talked about it in our other previous discussions, which was the Division 2 meeting, family members and heirs, we talked about reducing that from five to three acres, but it was not put in the ordinance.
Correct.
And we just want to confirm, do we want to leave it at three for Division 2 meeting families, do we want to go to two, or do we want to leave it at five?
And I would say that comes under the heading of A, minimum lot size.
Is that reasonable?
Yeah, that's, there's several, there's several, yes, points to be discussed under that, and that's, that's one of them for sure, that's a good one. All right, so going through this, A and, and, yes, ma'am?
Um, I haven't read it all, but is there a provision here on PRD of commercial leases that we're talking about?
There is, um, discussion about PRD, yes, under E, PRD.
Okay, so then on A, size and that sort of thing.
Yes.
And then, there was also, I had some questions about the short-term rental piece that was added by appointment.
Yes, ma'am, I, um, yes, also under E, under uses, the very last one, there's short-term rental policy.
Okay, assumption.
And, you know, related to the, the meeting we had, that was November 2nd, I think, was the meeting, in addition to listening, taking our own notes, we reviewed the official minutes from that meeting and factored those comments into here as well, but of course, those are important to review independently as well. So, A heading is what garnered the most public comments, the discussion, the proposal to increase minimum lot size requirements in A1 overall at one level, and then at an additional level for minor subdivision within A1. So, this whole first page is about that. Under that heading of, you know, factors to address, first is the increased minimum lot size for major subdivision in A1, from effectively two acres to five acres. So, if you're going through a preliminary final plat process, creating a new subdivision, the UDC proposes that that now be a five-acre minimum lot size in A1 without rezoning to R1. Major subdivisions began are those that have four or more lots, or involve, and/or involve a new street process.
Which would be two lots.
I'm sorry?
Two lots, if it involves.
If it involves a new street, yeah, if you're building a new street and subdividing two lots, it would be, yeah. And the process, as you well aware, for major subdivision involves planning commission review of preliminary and final plats, if there's no rezoning required. If there's a rezoning required, of course, it comes to you for approval, the rezoning prior to the, the plats. So, that's one aspect of it, we changed theirs effectively, we did not, in the end, we did not change the number of lots associated with defining major subdivision and minor subdivision, what we changed is the minimum lot size.
That is major subdivision in A1, not a major subdivision in anything else.
Correct, correct.
Just in A1.
Strictly talking about A1.
So, what is it currently, Brian?
In A1 is two.
Two acres.
With severance.
Okay.
And then, current code is actually not specifically stated as two acres, it's stated as density based on the type of development proposed. So, if you lay out a subdivision in A1 and you say this is like an R1 subdivision, then it's presumed that the two acres are R1 standard applies.
Like an R1 subdivision?
Well, it's, and there's a, there's.
If it's used for single-family housing.
If it's used for single.
Then it's, then it's subdivision in A1.
Correct.
And that could be two acres, the way it is now.
In my opinion, it's not adequately clear, and so what we're wanting to do with this is make it absolutely clear, in A1, this is the minimum lot size period, and A1, R1 period, and so on.
And it actually, apparently contradicts itself, where we have a section that says, if all lots are greater than five acres, it can remain A1, but then, two lines below that, it's one, two, and three, on number three, it says, if all lots are greater than two acres, it can remain A1 as well.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's, that's a correction that we're taking out.
Fixing those.
So, if you want to have two-acre lots in this twenty-acre area, you would have to rezonate to R1.
Correct, that's right.
But you could, I mean, you could go to the law system.
Seaside.
But if you want to maintain agriculture as the zoning, then it would be five acres.
Right, that's right. In the case of a major subdivision proposal, that's right.
No, it's a road front, you don't have to, the old is fifty.
The old is fifty, all road fringes are fifty currently.
And what's, what's the new?
Proposed one hundred and twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
And that's essentials to coverage. Right. And that's either B, as we go through the.
If you had, if you had twenty acres, there's no way you're doing a major subdivision with five acres, because you got all out of your roads.
Definitely not.
And that, you'd.
Well, it's called the shake on twenty.
Well, if you got all those on your ready.
You can go boom, 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 boom.
You can do four lots.
Four driveways.
And you, and all you would have to do at that point, you could do exactly, you would have four driveways, and you would do five acres, and all it would have to do is go through the planning commission for preliminary and final plat approval, and get land disturbance permit, because it would be considered a common development.
So, that's what has occurred on Harris Road, those are more than, they're still A.
There's still A.
Still A, and they've divided.
Two acre lots.
Flat, and two, those are two-acre lots, they're more than two acres.
No, they're more than.
They're ten or so.
No, you, where is it?
On Harris Road.
On Harris, most of those are ten or better.
I don't know, ten or better.
That was actually, you had a family that divided theirs into three, and you had three guys that divided theirs into three. They went in together and bought property, so it was actually two separate tracts, and then it split off. But, but now we've gotten confirmation from the county attorney that, well, if it's division, family members, it wouldn't matter, but something like what's happened on Winfrey Road would not be allowed.
On Winfrey Road, all right, um, awesome track of thoughts, so, those are, I'm just using that because I'm familiar with the one on Harris Road, would you consider that a major subdivision?
Never, not.
That's just a dividing of agricultural land.
That's just a division of property, correct.
On Winfrey Road, would you define that as a major subdivision?
That one should have been different.
So, they've divided into how many acres?
Uh, the corner piece was cut up into about four acre lots, so it's not bad, but it was the way it was divided.
So, that shouldn't come under the subdivision rules?
Yes.
And it did not?
It did not because of.
But it met our current.
Previous, because of previous judgment from somebody else.
So, it met our current UDC.
It meets our current UDC.
And I think that's a perfect example of why we want to do this, so that we don't have people circumventing the subdivision rules and creating subdivisions on large tracts of land.
Which we also now have covered, we have full clarification now, though, that if I have a forty-acre piece, and I split it right down the middle, I have twenty, or I'm going to split it, let's say, give me something, thirty acres, I got a thirty-acre piece, I'm going to keep my ten, but I'm going to sell it ten to somebody else, and I'm going to sell it ten to somebody else, or these, this guy says, you know what, I got two buddies, I'm going to make three lots here on my piece, and I got three, I got, this guy says, well, I'm going to sell mine to a builder, and he's going to put three lots on this piece. As soon as those three lots get split, it goes back to the original subdivision to go through the entire process, it covers completely. So, what we're proposing won't happen anymore.
If we leave it at five-acre lots in agriculture?
If we leave, well.
When you say, what we're proposing?
What we define now with that rule, it will, this, this, it could be two acres still.
Is it written, what you define now?
Yes, it is written in the rules.
So, when you leave and everybody else leaves?
It's, it's there.
It's written there.
It's there.
It's not just left up to.
It was, right.
Clearly.
It states clearly what it's supposed to do, but we had a different interpretation in the previous, for like the last ten years.
So, it's the procedural aspect, and there's the size and dimension aspect of this.
Right.
So, procedurally, the difference is between major subdivision and minor subdivision, and I think what you were just describing was that sort of chain series of minor subdivisions along the same area.
Along the same area.
Now.
Basically circumventing minor subdivision.
If that ten acres was right in the middle, it still wouldn't matter. It's the division of that property cannot be split more than four times within two year period.
Current.
Current. And now we have clarification on that, right?
That's whether it'd be in two acres or with that going to five acres?
That's being two acres.
So, now that ten acres, if we go with this, can only be split to two.
Correct.
If they maintain A1.
And the only thing I would change here is where we're saying the five, the A1 to five acres, and then for minor, we say A1 to ten acres, I would say change that to five acres as well. And the only reason I say that, I had three phone calls just today where people, they own land, they have property that they want to keep for themselves, but they want to be able to cut out a five-acre and a five-acre piece, they're good with that, they don't want to, he thought about doing two acres, and I told him, I said, well, just so you know, I'm meeting, going to meeting in twenty minutes, it's going to define what you're going to be able to do in a year when your conservation runs out. And I told him, just be prepared, I don't want, I don't know what that number is right now.
But also, if he wanted to do five and five, if we kept the minimum at ten, he could always do RR and go five and five.
That's if this only gets approved.
That's, correct, that's if this only gets approved.
But he does have that option.
Yeah, well, that's great to have an option, until somebody says, oh, this is spot zoning, we can't.
Right, and that's where.
But like, where you're getting those phone calls, where you have people who want smaller, I have the phone calls in my part of the county where people want to keep that ten, so.
Me too.
I respect your phone call at five acres, but I also.
Right, right.
Like I respect my phone call where my constituents want those ten acres.
And the thing about spot zoning, that, the fact that they can get rezoned, they have to go through the process, means that the planning commission and the commissioners get to take a very.
Good look at it.
Good look at it to determine.
That's true.
If that is an appropriate division, and now you can talk about property rights all you want to, but that's what this whole UDC is about, restricting property rights.
That's right.
In various ways, that's what UDC is, we might as well accept that, we, if not, we just throw the whole thing away and let everybody do everything they want to.
And if you look at our comprehensive plan, basically, that A1, that corridor, I think follows, is it basically 116 and north of 116?
It comes across.
208.
Yeah, and it drops down to 208, and then it drops way down, and then it comes back up around Waverly.
It goes up.
Up around Harris Road, yeah.
Where there's currently farms and, and large.
Large tracts.
Large tracts.
And I wouldn't say the word is restricting, I would say the word is limiting.
Well, okay.
Because, I mean, because.
Yeah, I understand what you mean.
You know, because, if you look at the constitution going back, it's in the constitution that we're going to limit this based on the fact of the general well-being or the general goods, so, you know, that's why it's there, is it's limiting, not restricting.
It's tied to the public health, safety, and welfare.
Yeah.
The laws of the constitution. It's always, in regards to property rights, zoning is always sort of balance or dance between protecting my rights to do what I want with my property, and protecting me from being infringed on by those of adjacent, surrounding properties by somewhat limiting their rights, limiting everything.
Right, individual versus the right of whole, and sometimes it leans toward the right of the individual, sometimes it leans toward the right of the whole, and that's why the planning commission is in place, and the commissioners are in place, to determine if that particular zoning request should lean toward the right of the individual or should lean toward the right of the whole. If not, we don't need the planning commission or the commissioners, we just need a book of rules, because that's where human discretion comes in, as we look at those, those situations. And, so, I, I am still in favor of the ten acres and the five acres on the major subdivision.
So, to clarify on the shifting from major subdivisions, I think we're all clear that the simple, straightforward change that this UDC proposes in A1 of major subdivisions is two acres to five acres. On minor subdivisions, it's a little more nuanced, there's two different types of minor subdivisions, if you look at it that way, there's minor subdivisions normal, and then there's minor subdivisions with family and heirs associated, immediate family and heirs associated, as the code defines it, and that's how your ordinances are currently. So, the, the proposed UDC, as it's written, puts minor subdivisions with no immediate family or heir connections involved as a ten-acre minimum for a lot created by minor subdivision in A1, and puts at five acres at this point, the minimum size for a lot created under the immediate family heirs provisions of minor subdivision.
That's what it is now.
That's what it is now, it's a change for now, although, the fact of the matter legally is that in heir circumstances.
Yep, you can change.
I think oftentimes what you experience is lot sizes are kind of determined by the court, the court.
It's five acres, yeah.
If the court, if the court has a five acre, is dealing with a five-acre piece of property that's, you know, that flows down to five heirs, then you end up with five hundred acres.
You do.
What is the determination of what an immediate family member is?
We have a list in the book.
I know, and that list includes nieces, right? But it doesn't include nephews?
No, it does, it includes nieces and nephews, but it does not include aunts and uncles.
That's right.
I knew, I knew it included one without.
That's going the other way.
That's going the other way, so, it's just like with parents, it does not include, it includes immediate parents, so if my name was on the property and my wife's name wasn't, my parents could come, I could divide it to my parents, but I could divide it to hers, because they're in-laws, and the in-laws are not on the list. If the property's in both names, mine and hers, we can do whatever, it can go any way.
And how do we determine that nieces and nephews are immediate family members?
You don't, you, if a guy comes in.
I'm just trying to figure out.
Where did that definition come from?
Yeah, that's, that's what.
Who determined that definition?
I have no idea.
Is it the local definition?
I, I don't know, there's a lot of ordinances out there, just like ours.
Yeah, I know, that's, that's what I'm saying, is that some definition that came from, say, an ACCG regulation, or is it in state law, or?
Yeah, this immediate thing didn't come in until about fifteen years ago or so, and I don't know where John got that.
So, we're talking basically immediate family members would be your parents?
It's like your medical stuff.
Or your.
Who's on paper?
Right. I've made a note to ask, do we need to actually write that in here?
It's in there already.
It's in, right in our glossary?
Um, the immediate family members are listed already, under, it should be under that, I don't know what section it is now, it would be mentioned, but, it was section seventeen oh four. That's immediate. And see, here's the thing, if a guy comes in and they put that up on their, the section seventeen oh four, as per section seventeen oh four, Division 2 meeting family members, and they give me that, we don't ever know if they bring on family members or not.
Well, see, that's my point, how do you know if that's actually their niece or their nephew?
We don't usually, I mean, it's, it's, if they, if a niece comes in ten years later, or somebody that claims to be a niece comes in ten years later after the property was split, and they say, oh, my niece lives there, they get to go and remain and go on.
Right, and I know that there are several parts of that where people are actually cousins, but because they raised this child, they consider them nieces or nephews, but in reality, they're actually cousins.
Right.
You know, so that's what I'm saying, it may be defined in there, but, you know, how do you actually know?
The actual wording, enforcement is always, you know, I agree, enforcement that's on here, it needs to be enforceable.
Which is really.
Strictly not enforceable, that's, that's one.
The only thing we can do.
And we treat.
The only thing we can do is, is treat it when it comes into us as a plat.
Now, you're correct what you said, Brian, it's right here, it's five oh one point oh three, A2, none of the solicited property given to a landlord is immediate family, which consists of spouse, children, grandchildren, parents, grandparents, siblings, nieces and nephews. Not big stuff. Not aunts and uncles and not cousins.
Right.
Or not a sibling here.
Or the most. I guess that's true. But the question there is, do we want to reduce that, because we talked about this in our big meetings, do we want to reduce the immediate family member from five acres down to something else as a trade-off? And we talked about that, and we said we could go to something like three, I actually wrote it down, but we never determined that.
I can see that to a family member.
And that's what we have to decide.
Say again, Brian.
So, this is just Division 2 immediate family members, not to heirs per last testament, but to immediate family members only. We currently have a five-acre minimum.
Unless there's a will.
As a trust.
Unless there's a will.
It's two different components.
As proposed, we currently, as proposed, we currently have it as a five-acre minimum, which it currently is a five-acre minimum.
So, no change.
So, no change. We had discussed in our meetings that we had over there, that we would, as a trade-off to family members, we would allow them to have something less than five acres, but that was never decided. It was discussed, but I don't think there came up the number.
So, that's one of the decisions in play here on minor subdivision, the other decision is for circumstances involving no immediate family connections or heirs, do we keep the minimum lot size at ten acres, as currently written in the draft of UDC, the final document, or do we revise that lot size number, which always with a minor subdivision in A1, that's only in A1? And I guess the other thing, just to clarify, any existing lot of record in A1.
Is probably.
Is treated as available lot.
Whether it's a half acre, an acre, acre and a half.
This only applies to new subdivision property, not to any existing lot property. Now, the, so beyond identifying those as the variables that we're dealing with here, I provided a description, as I see it, of how this discussion developed, what's, what's the reason, purpose, intent behind the proposal, which, as you can see there, you know, it's about encouraging preservation of agricultural character, preserving rural lands, encouraging development of new residential to be in proximity to existing residential, as opposed to popping up more in rural areas of county, which seems to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. Other factors that we do see, these types of, you know, five, ten, even twenty-acre minimum lot sizes in peer communities around different places, I think, Meriwether next door, Welling Plaza, twenty, twenty-five acre minimum lot size in rural areas, and you'll, I mean, of course, we've got one hundred and fifty-nine counties in Georgia, so you're going to see the whole gamut across, as you look across, but there are examples of larger, there are examples of smaller, and then similarly. And then the final point I made in understanding is, the rationale for the proposed differentiation of a minimum lot size between major and minor subdivisions has to do with the different review process, major subdivisions involving planning commission review consideration, minor subdivisions not. Now, below that, and finishing out the first page, are just summaries of comments from the notes at the meeting, which I think all of you were there to hear those, I don't think we need to read through those necessarily, but those inform, you know, inform us as we make decisions.
To the common of the spot zoning, there are, a lot of subdivisions that have popped up in agricultural areas right now, and so, when the planning commission looks at this, and it comes before them to rezone, they're going to look to see what in the last twenty years has popped up around there, so it might not be as much spot zoning as you might think. I think about down my own road, it's all agriculture, and you make a turn, and in a quarter of a mile, it's all residential, it's probably RR down in Lake Drive.
It's R1.
RR.
R1.
So, if people purchased that land on that, on that end of the road, and the planning commission's looking at it, they could go either way, they could say, okay, that's RR right there, but there's A1 down here, so then it's up to their discretion as far as looking at all the other substances. But I think there are plenty of places where they could use their discretion in determining whether to change that or not.
From my experience, spot zoning is not, it's not a white and white.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I'm trying to say, is that, you know, oh, no, there's all lag down that road, we're never going to go to R1 there, well, if you turn a corner, there's RR down there, so, you know, perhaps you could. And that's the kind of discretion I think we need, not just an automatic go to allow major or minor subdivision in the middle acre land, I think that's where we're trying to get to, and when I talk to people, that's really trying to get to, is to have more consideration of it.
Correct.
And not just have it occur automatically over and over in place. over and over in places that we're trying to maintain the agricultural zoning.
So under this heading of A one, minimum lot sizes, minor subdivision, major subdivision, et cetera, do you feel like what I've put forth here captures the issue factors that we need to address in that end of that head? Okay, do we want to discuss this one any further tonight, or move ahead and talk to the rest of them?
What would be the rationale, Brian, of taking the minor subdivision for immediate families and moving it to three acres? I mean, I'm not saying I oppose, I'm just asking, do you think, based on you being in there, immediate family members have been, it's been divided, you think three acres would be better for immediate family members, or leaving it at five?
The reason I say three would be more realistic is because, if you don't... Five's, five's the big number, when they want to just carve out two acres, currently you could just carve out two acres and give them that, if it has road footage, if it doesn't have the road footage, then you get into the five acre minimum stuff, and I think the three would be a little bit more, as a trade-off, more immediate family members.
Reason.
Reason, I do, and, I mean, I, I'm just coming from my perspective here, I think the ten acres is a huge jump.
True.
And I think if we went more along the lines of R one being two, RR maybe going to four, and then put A one at five as a minimum, instead of ten.
And I think that's reasonable.
And that still gives everything different classifications, because we've wandered through this desert for the last twenty years, where R one and A one were the same thing as two acre minimums, with fifty feet of road footage, and that's the reason we have a lot of what we have, and it's just, it is a sprawl development, yes, but it is, it's just something that happens over time, it's rural development, that's what it is.
And that's where, well, we're trying to, to limit that sprawl that talks about, and create those more ag-friendly spaces in what's currently A County, so I disagree with you there, however, I couldn't go with a three acre for our heirs.
You know, people have the same concerns, like Nancy pulled the minutes from back from when we changed from one acre to two acre.
Oh, yeah.
It was the exact same.
This is gonna kill, here it's gonna kill the property value.
Right.
And it's done the complete opposite, I mean, people are moving here every day.
But you've only, but you've only increased it by one acre instead of going from two, ten.
Two, double the size of it, yeah.
I think I heard it loudly and clearly.
Yeah, and going back to that, I think whenever, if I'm not mistaken, reading some of the minutes from back then, when it went to two acres, wasn't the real push to get five acres to R one? I thought there was a push to get to five.
Somebody might have suggested it, but it didn't go. Like here, you, people look at these minutes, and they're gonna see, well, y'all talked about ten acres, and five acres, and three acres, and ten years down the road, y'all been talking about it, but it didn't go that way, you know?
Okay, so let me, let me put my mental thinking, I have ten acres of agriculture. I'm gonna sell five. I wouldn't be able to do that.
That's the proposal. You wouldn't be able to do anything?
Not, not that she could, but there would be a process.
Oh, yeah, well, what I'm saying is, the decision as to whether or not I could sell my property, not use my property, because use and sale is different, two different things, would be up to five people.
The question is subdivision, so in order, in that scenario, in order to subdivide a ten acre property to, you would require a planning commission.
I'm good with that. Which very well could be, no, you can't say...
No, 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 you would be required to rezone at that point.
Yes, you would have to rezone.
Because you could not be a major subdivision.
You would not be a major one, that's right. You would, you would be required to rezone at that point.
If you find it about it, too, it's a minor subdivision.
You couldn't just zone five and keep, and...
And keep five.
Yeah, you would have to rezone the entire business.
Correct. I, for one, would not wanna be in a position to tell somebody, can't say one, and that's basically what you figure.
Well, the same thing, you have two acres now, you want to sell them at one, you're telling...
No, you're, no, you're not.
You can't, you got two acres now, you can't divide it and sell it in A one, you can't do that.
But as Brian, to Brian's say, this is a huge jump.
It is.
It is a bigger jump, but it's, what I'm saying is the same scenario.
The hypothetical ten acre property could be sold, just as a whole.
Right.
It couldn't be subdivided.
That's what I'm saying, but what I'm saying is, that decision as to whether or not you could sell that property is left up to five other people.
Decision of subdividing property is.
Yeah, if you divided it into two five acre lots, you couldn't keep one five acres, keep one, and the other five acre...
Or R.
Yeah, you'd have to make both of them RR.
Correct.
Right.
That's what I'm saying. So to go from A one to RR, to me, it's not that big a jump, as a commission, if I was sitting there and you had ten acres, you wanted to divide it five, and look around, would judiciously look at that decision to determine A one to RR, just as we look at other zoning decisions to determine.
And then if you have, then if you have those two five acres, then you can rezone it to R one for two acres, or two and a half acres apiece.
You can rezone it to R one, do five lots, ten acres.
Now, you can, but not with the new ones.
If you rezone it, you could.
Oh, that's right, two acres.
Two acres, but you're still at R one.
Yeah, so if you rezone, split it in two, the two five acres, you could then rezone it again to R one, even after you went to RR.
No, no, it's, it's here.
So that takes you two years, that's your...
After the zoning decision, you have to wait two years unless the board of commissioners chooses a different option.
Well, you keep saying that you can rezone it, that's not true. You could go to fly, I'm talking to someone.
Correct, you can apply it.
That doesn't mean you're gonna get it rezoned, which is, just like it is now. About use. I'm talking about disposition of property, I'm not talking about use, those two different things, when you start telling me that someone else is gonna, may or may not, rezone my property, I can't, I can't sell my property, and my ex says doesn't grant me a rezoning.
Sure.
Use and dispositions two different things.
But technically, what you're talking about is not selling property, subdividing property.
But, but in order to sell it, I have to subdivide.
Well, not necessarily, you can sell it.
No, I mean, in this scenario, did I put four? She wants to keep her house in D.
We keep the house.
All right, and still the other five, in this scenario, but I put...
Right, right.
Sell them to your family.
Unless it's your area, you know?
But, but even now...
Yeah, unless it's your ad row.
But even now, you have to fill the application, et cetera, that they sell the actual property as you're selling it. I've seen them deny it.
Well, I understand that, but they used to sell R one.
Oh, you know that stuff.
So I understand that, I have contingents.
One thing I've heard, this, this debate's obviously continuing to make sense, I have heard, I think I've heard fairly general agreement on the notion of the three acres and a half lot size for immediate family heirs situation. Is that real?
Three acres.
I'm fine with that.
So if I had an immediate heir, and you wanted him to improve your tenure, you'd say, Alice, I like your suggestion.
Two more five?
Yeah.
So that is, the immediate family member would be three, instead of five.
And, and then I guess the, the related question to that point is, we're joking about aunts and uncles, but do we need to modify our list, those who qualifies as...
I would, you could.
If you look at it on medicals or things like that, your immediate family is...
Is that list...
What we had was a subdivision.
For the other things, yes.
Yeah. All right. Okay, so that's one that we've checked, do we want to...
Do you want to loophole?
Sorry.
I think they're talking about loophole over here.
Well, there's always a loophole, anything you do.
So basically, going back to the scenario, what I was just coming up with, and what I was thinking was, maybe what you were saying with the ten acres, if somebody was trying to get around, they could come up and say, okay, if this is heirs, I'm gonna give this to my nieces and nephews, or whatever, then you need this over to your nieces and nephews or whatever, in three acres, or three point whatever acres, and you put it up, and five acres, and you turn around and sell that one.
It's not for, it's not for five acres.
Yeah.
Not for five acres.
Ares have a five year issue.
Yeah, heirs do have a five year clause, it cannot be sold for a period of five years.
Is anybody keeping track of that?
Yes, I've called over nine since I've been here.
Well, we're not keeping track of who the nieces and nephews are, so...
No, but what you do, but what you do, it's real hard to do that, yes, but when somebody comes in...
When your niece and nephew, did you say that you're gonna inherit?
And that's just, that's just on their conscience at that point, where I, I can't regulate that guy, I don't ask for driver's license or certificates, I'm not doing that, but what I am saying is, I've had many come in and want to further subdivide property that they subdivided with like four and a half years ago, and I've had to tell them, you gotta wait six more months before you divide this again, or you have to wait, and we've had even sell property, which is real hard to keep up with, because again, if they, they can sell that property two years after they've had it, and we won't know a thing about it, because we don't get real estate, but what we will see is when they get ready to build something on that lot.
Then it comes to...
Then it comes, then it comes to us, and we can kind of see what's going on, but again, it's real hard to keep up with that, the, the thing that we try to minimize more than anything is splitting. As far as selling, that, that's almost impossible to keep up with.
But if you and I though, you can split forty-five acres and do it as a loophole, even though you tell them they can't do it, and you and I have dealt with that personally, and it happened when both of us told them you couldn't do it.
Because, they did it by what? I'm dealing with the situation right now, they do it by deed, and not by plan, and I have a situation right now, where something got split, and it doesn't have road footage, and they're wanting to build a house right in front of us, and now we've seen the split, and I can't approve it. So it was by deed over a year ago, it was split by deed over a year ago without proper road footage, and now that it's come to our attention, because somebody on the front block wants to build a house, we can't even give them a building permit until they rectify their situation. It happens, all the time.
I trust me, I know.
People put easements on deeds that we don't know nothing about.
So they do that, but it's at their own risk.
It's at their own risk, exactly.
They're turning inside and get around the road.
Yep.
Having plans. Until plans are planned for all splits.
So they want to play.
You know, for all...
All right, so before leaving this, let me check one more round, so we've, I think we've, we've confirmed we're good on three acres for immediate family members, for major subdivision, minimum lot size is A one, I haven't heard...
Major subdivision, you said?
Yes, sir.
Correct, I haven't heard a, I guess I would say, an argument against that at this
point, I would be comfortable with a major subdivision, five acre minimum, effectively increasing to two to five.
And I guess if I look at a major subdivision, and you have to have, you know, four or more lots of five acres, or twenty acres, and you can have a five acre tract, as a commissioner, I would also look at someone trying to be on R one, thinking that if you could do a major subdivision and have five acres, rezone to R one and A one, does it send a communication to R one?
Obviously equivalent, it is equivalent.
Well, we, yeah, we have, in this process, and on this draft you can see, we have made five acres also a minimum lot size for RR.
Right.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Maybe all difference in the two is what you can do on the properties.
RR is effectively more restrictive.
Right.
That's right.
More limited.
More limited. Because A one is still primarily agriculture, which, you know, has industrial aspects to agriculture processes from time to time.
But all these little lands that we have right now, that are A one, that are less than five acres, they're gonna stay that way, and in A one, they can still have a major farm on that three acres, or four acres, whatever they want.
Wherever they can fit.
Even with the neighbor named Dorco, and I don't hold the...
Yes, right.
I don't have a hundred roosters.
Or a hundred chickens, or a hundred roosters.
Put yourself in Melody Lakes or Pine Lake, tenth of an acre lot.
Oh, wow.
It's A one.
Yeah.
Tenth.
Yeah, Pine Lake.
Well, we can't fix that.
You could, if, if you decided it was worth the effort, and you had a good, new county initiated rezoning, to put those tenth of an acre lots in the correct compatible subdivision category.
It didn't make everybody happy.
Absolutely.
Huge.
Yeah.
Right, but what I'm saying is that regardless of what we go with, whatever we adopt, yours, if you don't change everything, you're still gonna already have your spot zoning, because we're already at it. You know what I'm saying, it's already there, we're not fixing it unless we do a complete major overhaul, which would...
There's, there's always gonna be grandfathered service, ancestors, all of a sudden.
Yes.
I understand, and that's why we have very specific language regarding non-conforming uses and circumstances of their ability to perpetuate and so forth. Okay, so I think for, at this point at least, fine with five acres as the new major subdivision minimum lot size, and then the remaining question is ten acres for minor subdivision, and we don't have to resolve that tonight, that's, maybe we should move on through the rest of them. All right, so the second item, be on the next page, second heading, is minimum lot width increase from fifty feet to a hundred and twenty-five feet, there were comments about this, we proposed, if you remember, for the November second meeting, staff, the county belt department provided a memo recommending some modifications to the draft that you had at that time, in response to comments we got at the planning commission meeting and otherwise, and one of those recommendations was to modify the minimum lot width requirement to additionally allow more narrow lots for lots located on curbed road sections, and there's already exceptions for flag lots and for cul-de-sac lots, so there's, yeah, some tweaks we already recommended that could be made to the Article Four section for two parts about lot widths.
Well, the rules were flag lots, aren't they? I thought we didn't have, couldn't have flag lots.
Have flag lots.
You have flag lots.
Did you speak to road footage?
Yes.
Fifty feet.
Did you speak to road footage for any of A one or R one?
If you ride down Aberley Lane...
Yeah, oh, they've got long narrow ones.
Well, when you look, when you first enter Aberley Lane, if you look to the left, those houses sit back from the road, there's a little more, probably not this much, distance between the two homes, it looks, it's beautiful. If you look on the right side of the road, those houses are close to the road, close together, it's a totally different feel, on the same road, based on where your head turns, whether you turn this way or whether you turn this way.
Two different developers.
And I think if we, what we're trying to do is capture that field that's on the left side of that road, instead of that field on the right side of the road, the comments that I've heard over and over are that our subdivisions look like retained, and they don't look like a rule.
Because we have currently in our ordinance, our side setbacks are set at ten for single story and twelve for two story, that's the reason I've said the whole time, your problem isn't road footage, because fifty foot back from your building line, your fifty foot front setback, you have to have a ninety foot building on your lot. have a ninety-foot building width on your lot. If we increase that to, say, a hundred or a hundred and twenty-five, then you, or I suggested that we would increase the side setbacks to twenty or twenty-five feet. If you do that, you've put forty feet between houses right off the bat, there's no question.
And setback, how many feet?
Right now, we require fifty, you can go to seventy-five, I see that, I see seventy-five lots.
What do we say in the setback?
The setbacks are changing.
Yeah, the setbacks have changed.
We have not changed that.
Well, I thought we had changed setbacks. I've changed setbacks.
So we've increased the lot width, road frontage effectively, from fifty feet to a hundred and twenty-five feet, which applies to A1, RR, and R1.
So that really doesn't navigate us around the shotgun lines, because I think what we're trying to really get away from is the shotgun lines.
You don't have lot ratio.
Right.
We haven't installed a lot ratio requirement.
Right, that's right.
We discussed lot ratios six years ago with the planning commission, and it dove around for about a year and a half and went away.
Because, I mean, not all lots are created equal, you can't divide them all equal.
No.
So there's gotta be a give there, but we are trying to get away from the shotgun lines, where you've got these two-thousand-foot deep lots, that's the difference, right? And the house is sitting right here in the front, so that's what we're trying to avoid.
Where we are at this point is trying to improve, we're not establishing a lot ratio, but we're establishing a wider minimum requirement, which improves the circumstance.
It cuts down the number of blocks in that case.
The one-twenty-five.
Or it determines different subdivisions, and if you're a subdivision design surveyor, land planner, you're working with the lay of land, boxee features, et cetera, and rules, so it's a balance of those factors. So what you have seen thus far has been the result of a combination of lay of land and rules. If the rules are different, then it's not just simply that those lots that you see in the plat are gonna get wider, there's gonna be a different approach to planning and plating that property based on different rules that would apply.
So there was a sacrifice there, I can tell, I know this for a fact on every lane. That one time, they were gonna put in another little road that would have afforded lots on the inside of that road and to the outside, and made them wider and bigger and things like that, but because there is a huge ravine over there that drops off to about sixty feet, it was unfeasible, therefore they didn't do a new road, they just went ahead and did the long skinny lots, but, which I don't care for, I think if we do, I don't have a problem with a hundred and twenty-five feet of road frontage, I really don't, but I think it needs to be more at your setback lines rather than your road frontage. Because your road frontage can manipulate quite a bit, I mean, if we're just gonna say that even in cul-de-sacs you can get down to fifty, then why does it matter? What you're looking for is, where am I gonna put this house on that piece of property, and what's gonna be next to me? Again, if we don't change the side setback, I can still build, I can have a two-hundred-foot lot here and a two-hundred-foot lot here, I can stack this house and be twelve feet away from the little property line, and I can stack this house and be twelve.
I'm not gonna change the setbacks.
I know that's not part of our discussion, but I think that is something that's helpful to consider.
I might first talk about setbacks.
One question on setbacks, I have, early on in discussion, there was concern expressed that the end result of some subdivisions can be effectively a neighbor's house being like in the backyard of your house, you know, because the setbacks are dramatically different.
It's like parks, it's like.
Parks are, I think that's what I saw there as that example, so we wanted, I understood that we wanted to avoid that circumstance in the future. But that's a strong, you know, your point of setting the width requirement, setback versus the street makes sense, as long as it's at the defined minimum setback line, not at whatever they determine the setback should be for that piece of your house. Because somebody could say, I've got a thousand-foot deep lot, my setback's gonna be at the five-hundred-foot mark, because that's the house site I've already done, but that shouldn't be the determining factor for the width of the lot. So it's at minimum setback line is what I mean.
A hundred and twenty-five is just an arbitrary number, I mean, there's no magic in that.
Oh, really? I think this is my proposal, right now, we currently require ninety feet at the building block line, or at the building line, which is a fifty-foot setback. Maybe make that a hundred or a hundred and ten feet. Now, that's only fifty feet back now, if we wanna change that fifty-foot front setback, we need to think carefully on that, because you're fixing to cut a lot of these small lots that are buildable currently, that are existing, you're fixing to cut them out.
And you're lengthening them.
Well, if they're a lot that's currently existing, aren't they grandfathered?
No, they're grandfathered in on size only, not on setbacks. They would have to come for a variance to reduce, and I have a lady right now, and I've told her, and I'm getting a variance.
Unless we put it there than if it's already settled, grandfathered.
What's that?
Unless we define it in here.
Specifically?
Right, that'd be hard and force.
Yeah, because your former setbacks.
I deal with different setbacks, because I deal with, right now, three other cities in defining their setbacks, and I also deal with Bullberry Grove, which is a totally different setback, and the rest of the county, so I'm dealing, right now, I'm dealing with five different sets of setbacks, and believe it or not, there's a lot of neighborhoods that put in their own setbacks when they come in through their covenants. They come in with their own covenants, and they put in like, I think Cocoa Lake has seventy-five, is it seventy-five? And so there's certain, that's when it gets, what is that neighborhood doing? Corner lots on the floor, anyway you can look at it. Anyway, you look at corner lots, they're just, they're always the pain in their size. But, they're all about that.
But I still think we need to address that, there's gotta be some way that we can.
Well, I think the twenty-foot on the side setbacks is an easy, that's an easy one.
That was, that's been recommended.
Because you're at twelve, right now, for the two-story house, let's go to twenty, then you just put forty feet between these houses like that.
Is there any, is there any divided setback from the front, from the front?
It's from the front property line, from the front property line, where the road is, from the property line to your house is fifty feet. Most of them on average lanes sit a lot further than that.
On the left.
On the left, you're like, on the left.
On the rural side.
On the right.
Off the street.
On the right, you're sitting up on the hill, and you're sitting down in a hole.
That's what I'm saying. That fifty feet is uniform for all districts, R1, R2, R3, A1, RR, that have present. Fifty feet is, from looking around comparatively, it's not, I mean, of course, in rural areas, you'll have properties that much farther back from the road, but the suburban standard forever has been forty foot from your setback, so you're in excess of what's been considered normal, you know, effective, but yeah, from what's been considered normal, suburban, one-acre, two-acre development, forty feet has been the standard setback forever. A one-acre plus-minus lot. When you get into, you know, truly urban neighborhoods, then you're more like twenty, an older place, I lived in a hundred-year-old home, the setback's about twenty feet on the sidewalk, so.
Quarter-inch.
I think it's a whole town.
Well, I don't know what the number is, but.
But we definitely have recommended previously, continue to recommend modifying that side setback, so currently in A1, side setback is either ten feet or twelve feet, depending on how you look at it.
Yeah, well, twenty.
One-story, two-story. We propose getting rid of the distinction between one- and two-story houses, and just setting a standard side setback of twenty feet in A1, RR, and R1, and that would give you the separation between houses, you know. The question is what to do regarding to a hundred and twenty-five, but that's where we stand at this point in the draft, wide width for the street. We can either reduce that, keep it in lot width as a street, or we can keep it at that and shift it from lot width at street to lot width at setback, building line, or other.
But they still have to sign access to the street.
I mean, if we're trying to avoid shotgun lots, with two acres minimum, I'd like a hundred and twenty-five feet, to prevent those shotgunized lots, shotgun style.
It does, but most, like those lots out there, most of those were a hundred and ten, a hundred and fifteen feet, they were only ten feet tall. That would require a lot ratio. Which is a very tricky thing to do.
And there are communities that have it, and that would be a very significant rule change for your R1 land planning to deal with. The other thing we've introduced, though, in elsewhere in this code, is the conservation subdivision option, so that I think some of your developers can seriously consider, instead of those long deep lots, using a conservation option and having some of that.
So you're saying that what we're contemplating here is actually a more of a push towards the conservation, as a development?
That option is in here.
Oh, pushing.
We're not pushing it, we're presenting.
You're presenting developers an option, it's an option.
Right, representing the option, and I think that when a developer with a big tract that's got some topography and things on it, when they go to a land planner and say, what's the best approach for this, if you've got significant areas of undevelopable land, slopes, wet, et cetera, it's gonna be attractive to look at that open space option and say, we can set aside, you know, open space per code, we can, in the right cases, do lots that are a bit smaller in exchange for the open space, in the end, we can extend less infrastructure, less roads, to get the same number of units in there.
Do we say a minimum lot size on the conservation?
Conservation, yes.
I know we say that you can only put the same number of lots as you would a two-acre lot, but we didn't say.
Well, in almost every case, a conservation subdivision is gonna be on septic.
Sewer.
On sewer.
No, conservation is gonna be on septic. You're gonna have very, your sewer right now.
Oh, yeah, VRD would be sewer.
Yeah, VRD would be sewer. Conservation subdivision is gonna be on septic, so health department is gonna, at a base minimum, determine a one-acre minimum, and it could be larger depending on soils conditions. If it's on well and septic, then it's an even larger minimum lot size for the.
The problem that we've seen with those is, just like heart reserve, we have people that want to, that moved in there, they liked their house, well, then they can't put a pool in there, your secondary lines are taken up, you can't even put a building up there. So when you go to these one-acre lots and conservation subdivisions, usually those type of developers are gonna put a lot of covenants in the place that aren't gonna allow pools, that aren't gonna allow, you know, key storage built, or some things like that, so.
So table five dash one is what defines the different lot sizes for comparing compares conservation conventional subdivision, and it makes a distinction between having public water septic, having public water and sewer, et cetera. So in the case where a conservation subdivision has public water and septic, the standard is one acre minimum lot size or per health department or whatever, whichever is greater for each lot, and that can vary across a piece of property. For a circumstance where there is public water and sewer, you know, sewer's available, then it's per master plan approval, so it's really the master plan that determines it, but the net yield, the net number of lots, is based on what that tract could yield as a conventional subdivision. So if it's R2, excuse me, if it's R1, you've gotta lay it out first as what the maximum yield would be per R1 standards conventional subdivision, and then that's your number, number of lots, okay, now I can redesign it using conservation approach. Same number of lots, same number of homes, same density, but clustered in certain areas in exchange for preserving the open space, with a minimum one acre lots or larger per health.
Brian, you said that if they did this conservation subdivision, usually the developer or the HOA or whatever is gonna have all these covenants in there, right?
Typically, yes.
Typically. Well, what happens when that HOA is no longer the HOA? Because we got a bunch of subdivisions in this county that their HOA had been defunct for.
We have a bunch of them that did away with their HOAs over time. I know mine has tried, they've thought about it, considered it, but we've kept on going, trucking on it, but.
I guess at that point, it comes to you to enforce the code, if they're putting covenants in place.
No, no, we don't enforce covenants.
No, I was saying, just start with a pool.
Yeah, lots of them put a pool because of subdivision.
Basically, it's for the covenants in place to prevent people from knowing that you can't.
The cool scenario is the property that the house is on, and the point that these smaller lots, doesn't leave enough space.
Doesn't leave enough space to put a septic.
Health department, or anything.
That's health department.
Until he moves to septic.
Yeah, I mean, there's, you know, there are different types of drainfields, some are high-tech, more expensive, take less space, so someone really wants to use a pool.
They redesign the drainage.
Can't, yeah. Is it regulated where the community can't put stuff, I mean, can your secondary lines be in front of your house?
Yes.
Or you can run over to the property line and be on your progress line, you can put them.
They can be all in the front yard.
Yeah, mine's in the front yard.
I had to move my pool one foot, so I'm in my own house.
I need one garden.
My thought on that is that we do go with the twenty-foot.
What if we did a hundred-foot road frontage, twenty-foot side, and seventy-five foot from the property line back?
Seventy-five foot back?
Yeah, so what if we go a hundred-foot road frontage, seventy-five from the property line back, and then twenty on the sides? How would that be, Brian? We go a hundred road foot, hundred road foot frontage, seventy-five property line back, and then twenty on the sides?
The biggest problem I have is the seventy-five, and I know you all want stuff further off the road, but most of that's gonna be determined anyway where that builder's gonna put his house, I mean, that's just, we know that.
Well, we got a fifty right now, right?
It's fifty right now, but if you take places like Melody Lakes, you just gotta anybody I've ever put in some lot, a septic or a piece of property, because those lots are a hundred and ten feet. Right now, with a fifty and a thirty-five foot rear, that takes up eighty-five feet of my lot, I can still squeeze in something if I'm at a hundred and ten feet deep, but I'm dead right in the middle at twenty-five foot down.
All right, well, then what if you left it at fifty, say, a hundred road frontage, fifty front, and twenty on the side?
I agree completely, I agree. Again, your nicer subdivisions, your developers, who we hope would come here, would go in and do their own covenants and do things like that.
Because I agree, I think we need to do twenty on the sides, I think you need to spread your houses apart that way, and that's an easy way to do it, you know, because you're talking twenty, forty feet.
Yeah, but the only thing that we're looking at, I mean, you were talking about, we'd want to come in and do, you know, seventy-five, never put off the back, but what we can compare with is what we have today.
Well, what you have right now, though, and then think about this realistically, you typically have about seventy-five feet from the road, and you have a fifty-foot setback, and your right away's sixty-foot wide, and that's only twelve feet of pavement, so you got another eighteen feet.
Twenty-four feet of pavement.
Thirty feet from center line.
Yeah, right, from what, from the same line. So you got another eighteen feet plus fifty, so you're at sixty-eight feet right now.
But it's not property.
From the, and then asphalt.
But it's not property.
That's not property, but it's still from the road. And in most cases, where we're, I mean, we have some roads that have eighty-foot right ways.
What I'm saying, I mean, going back to her example there, I mean, they're still right up on the road, even with that example, with the center line as opposed to the property line, so.
We're looking at them on the right side.
On the right side.
Right side, you should enter, turn off the key, go enter this side.
Those first three old houses that sit up on a hill.
Those, fine, I'm coming this side.
Yep, opposite side.
My right and your right.
My, I'm going to get it, okay.
In a lot of cases, relatively speaking, they're close to the road because the lots are so deep. So you've got a thousand foot deep lot and houses, you know.
And you are lakefront property and you got this much land on the lake.
You're right. On some of you do.
You can't even cast a lot.
But that's one thing that I like about what we are putting in here is we talk about the usage of the land. Where we've taken anything that, that has water, if you can't use it, you're two acres in town. That is gone. That helps out tremendously.
Lake wise or like?
Lake wise, street wise, it does matter.
A little more?
Whereas before you could go to the middle of that lake.
Right. Go out to the middle of the lake.
So now you can go to the.
Water.
To the waterline?
Yes, maybe for a purpose. Not.
In a good year or a bad year?
Not at this stage.
In a drought.
We cannot count flood zones. That would be hard to do. But I have seen, when I first started with lakes, I mentioned they counted flood zones. They sure did.
And that's we get ninety four numbers.
They started.
I think that's a little.
Five.
But this room is what, fifty, sixty feet?
Hundred foot on the, twenty foot on the sides, fifty foot from the front.
I think it's thirty.
Okay, how wide is, how long is this room?
I'm thinking that's probably thirty.
One hundred foot on the, twenty foot on the side, side setback and fifty, fifty foot front setback. Which is if you look at the center line of road, that's eighty feet.
It's about forty-two feet.
That's, that's twenty-four acres, right?
So you have a house over there, a house over there.
I'd say, I'd say it's more about sixty feet.
In this, no, I think that'd be.
I'd say it's about sixty feet.
Which direction, please?
I mean, I'm going to have to truck you for tape measure if we just really got to.
I counted tiles. And no, those are two foot.
Those are two footers?
Two by twos.
So there's twenty-eight. So twenty-eight times two will be fifty-six.
Fifty-six, and then you add about two feet on that end.
So that's about sixty feet.
Yeah, that's a little over sixty. Yeah, about over sixty feet.
How would you count, about twenty-eight?
Including these spaces. So about, so about thirty, it was thirty-six feet. There's twenty, so about six, rather than sixty.
So I think if you do a hundred fifty, leave fifty on the, you know, the setback from the front part of the line, do twenty on the sides. I don't think that's a bad.
You got two different.
The, oh, yeah, the device.
Consistency is.
So a hundred foot frontage.
Yeah, so we're leaving it, we're leaving the front.
Twenty foot on the sides, no matter what story, single or two. It's going to be uniform twenty foot side.
Leave the fifty in the front like we got it already.
We just leave, so we're basically just changing two numbers, hundred foot of frontage, twenty feet on the sides.
We have already exceptions for cul-de-sacs because those are obviously patio plot circumstances.
And just so you know, if I do a flag lot, until I get to a width of ninety feet, my building line does not start. So if I have a flag that goes back and it's only fifty feet wide and then it opens up into a hundred acres, that line starts fifty feet, you know, from that line beyond that. So that'll keep a little bit longer.
But regardless of what we've already said here, that does not really deter, deter the. Should I have lots of?
No.
I don't think.
Lot ratio is the only solution to that.
I, I think your options are either lot ratio, which forces a different approach. Or which is challenging given the way R one works here. And so I'd say the approach we're taking more to try to achieve something other than the long length lots is incentive approach, which is a. Open space conservation approach. If I'm a developer and looking at that type of tract, I'm going to give that a hard look and I'm going to try to do one acre lots and preserve open space. And then my lots are going to be more regular size, not as deep because they're not big. The reason that you get such depth is because you've got the two acre minimum requirement. Combined with a fifty, currently a fifty foot minimum road front.
It goes a perfect rectangle on a hundred foot, the red front legs might be there, that's seventy some feet.
I think the one other thing I would ask, and I think that my take would be with the changes we just talked about, particularly reducing from a hundred twenty-five to a hundred, I don't think it's necessary to make a distinction for curves.
Not at that point, I would take that out.
That's.
Because if they can't work with a hundred, we just reduced that by twenty-five, I think they should do a quarter.
And that complicates matters a lot with that, too many exceptions.
All those got exceptions.
I say take all of that out.
That would be the first one.
When you go to comment from the public area, it says this is a two hundred fifty percent increase. That, that comment means nothing, it ain't, okay.
That's not nothing.
We, we documented.
Just like they said on the ten acres, that, they said that was a five hundred percent increase.
Okay.
Okay, so I think we've covered BEC as agritourism uses. We had proposed in our memo dated October twenty-eighth, presented to you before the November second meeting, we had proposed a number of changes related to agritourism to effectively make the wording more consistent with what we had as the intent. The intent being to allow someone who wants to do agritourism as an agritour, first and very important is, agritourism is not a primary use, principal use of the property.
That's right.
Agritourism is an accessory use to a working farm.
That's one, a special use.
Right. And so, so we, you know, we're not straying from that principle and approach that has been the precedent here. What we're doing is we're trying to make it less cumbersome for someone to do multiple agritourism accessory uses on a working farm. So they can say, if someone has a farm and wants to go big in agritourism or just go into agritourism and not hundred percent positive outcome, they can put together a conceptual plan. This is how we're going to approach this. We think we're going to do, you know, a farm job and a, or corn maze. And there's a number of other things, I think come up with new things, you know. Right, yeah, we think, we're going to do all these things. And here is our concept plan for how that's going to work out. And it's not a specific architectural draw, this is exactly where we're going to build the plant. It's a conceptual level plan that gives you the opportunity to look and say, okay, this is compatible with its surroundings. You know, they're not fitting this in an area where it's inappropriate. And approve them all at once as a single special use. And then the farmer can implement them over time or all at once as they choose.
Now, what about restrooms and parking lots? I know that's been some question. If they put that in their master plan, what is that all about?
Nothing, we just, you can't put a restroom, just a bathroom out there, a restroom facility, because then it constitutes as a core zoning, as a campground. So what I told him to do was to attach it to his building and it would be fine. Just like what we're doing out at the park, we're attaching bathrooms to our provisions, it works. If it's attached to something, you just can't have a standalone bathhouse, for lack of a better word. Unless you're.
But if you have a restroom in your barn, attached to your barn.
If you're attached to your barn, then fine.
So what if he put two bathrooms and then built a room that was two foot by two foot on the front? So the bathroom attached to the other.
No, that's not a bathroom.
Attached to another building.
That's, that's not attachment, I tell you.
So what's around attached to it?
Then it was worth it.
They're going to try to find ways around this, that's why.
I would say something that, I would say it needs to be attached to a special event facility, which has to, which requires a seating with at least fifty people. Otherwise you don't need bathrooms.
Okay, but if you look at it that way and you have a corn maze and you've got all these school kids out there, but when you get to wherever the middle part is, you might want just to have a boys and girls bathroom for them little kids. And it ain't going to be attached to nothing but the maze. I mean, that, that shouldn't knock it out of being agritourism. Because you know what you could do? You could go put porta potties out there and then it don't matter.
It doesn't matter, exactly.
But, but you know, it's a lot easier to have a, right, it's a lot easier to have, you know.
Portisers, that's.
Yeah, I know, but it's a lot easier to have a concrete blanked block building with two bathrooms out in the middle. And I'm not saying that anybody would want to, I'm just saying, you know, I don't know how we can say, oh, you can have this bathroom over here, but you can't have it over there.
Have you seen the strawberry patch in Reynolds?
What?
Yes, I have.
And they have that little building.
Yeah, I know, but that's, that's kind of where I'm, that's where I'm kind of going with it.
So if they include that on the conceptual plan, fine, we can approve it.
As long as it's a, a building of.
As long as it's, it's a mixed ADA regulations, it's fine. I don't have a problem with that.
For standalone bathrooms?
For standalone, if we wanted to allow a standalone bathroom, bathrooms, because we need a place.
Two.
Two.
Probably three.
I'll just go with two. You can actually just go with one. But as we, as we said. The, the possible thing is, again, you got to have power to that building now. And you got to have plumbing to that building. So you're not going to set it in the middle of the corn maze, I'm not just exaggerating.
No, you go to the strawberry patch over in Reynolds, that's what they did, right smack dab in the middle of it.
Yes, right, before you can do it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just saying, you know.
But there are restrooms that don't require, you can, they're pits, you see them in national parks.
Yes, you can do kids, yes.
You can see them in parks where you don't have.
But that's up to the health department, that's not my department.
Yeah.
Well, if we're going to support agritourism, which I think we should.
Make it a little easier.
Then all they have to do, all they have to do is just put it on their conceptual plan.
Then here are the restrooms.
Right.
Here are the restrooms, here's our.
Because, you know, even, even farming as the primary, what's going on on that property. Yeah, you need bathrooms sometimes just for your workers.
Yeah, but you got to have a proposal for you, so far with you, so does it matter? So if you have a barn that already has a restroom in it, is that qualifying? Okay.
Now, bathroom consists of a sink and a toilet, not a shower. Water bowl.
So we add that or what?
I say make them put it on their conceptual plan.
Yeah, yeah.
If they put it on their conceptual plan and we approve it, then okay. If they don't put it on there, then no, they don't get one. Then they'd have to come back and ask them in their conceptual plan.
So the language I propose to add, again, in the spirit of keeping it flexible, is to, so three oh nine point oh three currently says an applicant may also specify a particular use that falls under agritourism. That, that's under general minimum, minimum standard. You've got a minimum, minimum standard that the minimum lot size must be five acres. We can debate and discuss that, but this, you know, the notion was if you've got less than five acres, it's working farm, farm plus agritourism. But that could be revised. But you've got that as a minimum standard currently. And then the other minimum standard is simply that applicants can specify particular uses that fall under agritourism in addition to those listed below, corn maze, farm there. So, right, so that, so just to write in clarification, in addition to those listed in the second, an applicant may specify a particular use that they feel falls under agritourism, restroom, et cetera, et cetera. Anything can be specified, circus tent, you know, if they collect circus tent and support their agritourism activities, that can be proposed for consideration. So we propose, you know, clarifying that, clarifying that a master plan approach that considers multiple uses on a farm is encouraged and what the requirements are that you follow to apply to that. And then making it clear in article eleven on the application requirements that you don't have to do a huge complicated plan, you just need to cover, you know, show where the property is, what its boundaries are, a conceptual layout of proposed agritourism uses.
And marking.
Proposed ingress and egress points, proposed off-street parking locations, natural vegetation buffers, and plans for restroom accommodations is clear. So that's what's required to show on an agritourism master plan for special ones consideration.
If you require a house to have ten, why would you require a window?
I agree. If you're going to require, I mean, if somebody can do agritourism, shouldn't it have at least a minimum acreage of something?
It's, it's five.
I know, but you're requiring.
But you're requiring somebody to build a house on ten acres, I think agritourism ought to be a lot more.
No, I, I got to understand ten acres for that, because that's a lot, but much more than that, I wouldn't. Because I think there's somewhere existing, no less than ten.
Well, on five acres, you got a house on it.
Yeah.
Well, not necessarily.
That's right.
This could be just farm to barn or whatever.
You could have goats, you could do goat cheese, you could do goat milk, you could do.
But you've got to have public access.
Strawberry patch, you could do egg, I mean, you could do a lot of five acres.
I, I was just saying, if you're making me buy ten acres to live on.
And that's a common sense opinion.
You know, at least, at least the same amount for that.
Agritourism requires a business department? Yes. So in my opinion, a business is run differently than a residential household. So I could see.
I understand that.
A smaller acreage for agritourism because it's more of a business, that's your livelihood, isn't it? It's not a, a residence, it's not just a.
I was thinking about growth, you know, some things they start out small and then just mushroom.
Yeah.
And five acres, you're going to be limited to, because you've still got to have the parking, you've still got to have the restroom facilities, you've still got to have this, you've still got to have your own buildings to maintain your equipment for the farm. So after a point, they're going to be limited to what they can do.
But in that part of their, I guess their whole business plan before they decide.
And then if they grow, got to add some more parking, you got to be, you got to be, yeah, that's right. They got about more land and then it'll have to be ten acres.
They have to understand associated cost to building.
It was just a, just a comment, no problem.
Now, the, so under C on the, on your document there, I included a few summary comments from, you know, comments we got about agritourism. There's, you know, from some preference to not require special use. That's been the precedent to require special use.
Not for each.
Not for each?
No, we've done multiple on one application.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, somebody comes in and they put corn maze, pumpkin patch.
You don't have an agritourism special use.
Right, we don't have that.
But, or any agritour, if I have a working farm, can I do any agritourism activities without securing special use for the farm? Is anything by right, by standard?
Not for.
So that's what I meant, so is, so we're, we're keeping, at this point, we're keeping everything under special use. There's a suggestion that I shouldn't have to come to get a special use.
With just one master conceptual plan, you're done.
So that's, improving the efficiency of it, it's still requiring special use. The farm dinners question came up and I think that was, I think it was clarified that farm dinners are allowed four times per year, once per quarter for current code.
Yes.
Could be forty-two times a year, I don't know, you know.
So what is the specification or what was the reasoning about four times per year?
We said, you wouldn't actually run in a restaurant.
Sort of, all right.
You know, I, I don't. Another force of magic number.
Those would be of agritourism, right?
Right.
Okay. Yeah, but then it's different because you're.
And this is.
Farm dinners.
There's no change, farm dinners listed as agritourism options and it simply says limited to once per calendar quarter.
I don't know why it's not, really.
No more than your agritourism. You're doing goat cheese, you're doing chicken eggs, you're doing corn maze, you're charging a fee for all that. You're still, that's a, that's a business, but you're doing it under agritourism umbrella.
Yeah.
And if you have the farm dinner with the produce on your farm, you know, whether it's.
You could do it.
That's what I'm saying, once a month, once a quarter, what, you know.
I don't know why we would limit it, other than we were trying to keep it from becoming a restaurant.
Right, correct.
I'm curious if anybody here has been to a farm dinner, just because I have.
I've changed that one.
Changed that one.
And farmhouse has one.
Once, once a month would probably be ample for most, I would think, if they're, for planning and all that kind of stuff, you know.
But farmhouse is different, cause it's commercial.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that's like once a month, that sounds more reasonable.
Or if you did two a quarter, either way.
I like the two a quarter, that gives you eight.
I can see where you're, I can see where you're, I can see what you're talking about. If you start doing one a month, it could turn into a, quite a, a restaurant or.
I think, I think two a quarters is plenty. There's a lot of planning.
Cause then basically you can do one every other month.
They're, they're not, they're not cheap by no means either, you're paying a hundred fifty bucks a plate.
Change of charge.
Yes. Okay, that's an easy change. So do we wanna limit, I mean, do we wanna require an acreage for agritourism or not? Cause we kind of flipped.
It's a five now. In the, you know, as proposed.
So we have a lot of that on the farm side, you know.
Just leave it five, if I need more property, think about it.
Now, that was, the next question about fifty percent of the produce coming from the farm, um, that came about, if I, as you all remember, was about Christmas trees originally. So there were two farmers, one raised Christmas trees on his farm. The other one purchased Christmas trees and sold them on his farm.
Right.
And the people who raised the Christmas trees were saying that they were taking business from them, from county farmers, because they were bringing them in.
I think that's why with the farmer's market where you have, you're supposed to have fifty percent of your produce, whether it's the tree.
But if you went to a produce market, it doesn't matter, you can put whatever.
Who's gonna come out there and decide if I'm selling twenty squash that ten of them I grew and ten of them I got at the farm?
If I go up there and say, I need group of purchase, I think.
That's the issue of anything, is it forced. You'd like to see, you'd like to see a garden nearby where you have a farmer's market, you know, or something, so. But I know some that don't have.
Yeah, I, um, I don't know about that.
Is that an hundred rule, cause that?
What's that?
Fifty percent.
It's in there.
In the neighborhood.
It's in existence, I don't know if it's.
Yeah, but it would, unless you. If it's in there, make it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not in the definition, it's not.
I don't have a problem, that's.
I, I don't have a problem, I have my own little produce, but if you want to go, yeah. Casey, I really, I sold it. But, um, if you wanna go to the farmer's market and get a case of tomatoes and set it next door to me, I can.
Yeah, we don't currently have written in the year.
Well, I mean, that's like the guy that goes to Florida, wherever he gets all watermelons and comes back up here.
Yeah, you got watermelons growing right there.
And so, that's, that's.
Let the market decide that, if I want three grown, Harris County or one, I just purchase.
Produce don't never regulate it, so farmer's market shouldn't be.
Farmer's market.
They do, they already have it on that, so.
Let me require.
I have.
It's just like.
Yes, we got twenty minutes. Oh, good, we're going to, that's what we're supposed to.
Alright, so we need to cover agritourism. The next one can be very fast. Uh, item D, alright, so.
We know what's going on with that.
I thought we had, you said?
Yeah, that's, she's working on changing that.
Yes.
Okay. So that's, that's done.
Yes, we're working on it.
Yeah, we should work on that, we're gonna try to enhance, if we can, if we can just add it when we can.
So we'll follow the lead of the alcohol ordinance, either in the process of completing.
No, I was gonna ask him, you talking about the percentage?
Yes.
I know. You have to, a winery, the percentage that's set by the state.
Yes.
Yes, that state mandated.
And what percentage is that?
Twenty-five?
I, I don't know where I'll find it, but no, but I don't remember. But the state also has things on breweries and microbreweries and distilleries.
Now, think about breweries and distilleries. I can understand a winery being on a farm. I have no problem.
Cause you grow your wine, you're growing.
But a brewery and distillery, that's gonna turn into a bar, and it's gonna be a restaurant. It needs to be a restaurant.
No, not always. We, we went to one in Savannah, and.
You go to the brewery, you go to one.
I know, but it didn't have, it had a bar, and it had a catered thing, but no, no kitchen facility.
And you go to Omaha Run.
Which is what we don't allow.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
That's what we're trying to. Cause if you go to Omaha Run, it's in a county, it's not a restaurant, but it's a.
Brewery is a huge brewery.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not a restaurant.
Right. Can you taste there before you buy, or do you buy?
Yes, yes.
You can taste there and buy there.
We don't wanna have tasting rooms.
Yeah, let's say, dude, like, the brewery we went to in Savannah, which was done by ACCG, they had Lordurds or whatever, you could buy, you could taste the, the beer.
Right. But. You didn't buy the food, or did you buy the food?
No, cause they, they, whatever food they have is catered in Lordurds.
Incidental, thanks. Alright, so simply on D, breweries, distilleries, what we're doing with the UDC is gonna follow the lead of the alcohol ordinance, whether it gets in at the time of UDC's option or as a text amendment later.
We try to give them.
Okay, and it will allow, now let me be clear, it will allow them to go where?
We're not to that point yet.
We'll allow them to go.
Well, from the different definitions I've read.
What I'm talking about, what, our, our, commercial, what, what are we talking about?
The definitions I've found, you know, of a brewery, you brew beer. You know, distillery is you're, you're making liquor.
Right.
Uh, and in winery, of course, you're making the wine. So they're all manufacturing of some sort. But on the other hand, they're also agritourism, the wineries are agritourisms, the distillery could be agritourism.
It's a small branch.
But those kind of things would have to get another licensing. Um, that's what you gotta work out, so, it's, we're not there.
Trust me, Nancy and I in Savannah talked to a guy, did this for about an hour and a half, trying to figure out how, where it would go, manufacturing, agritourism, and it may have to go in both, or commercials.
They could allow no.
Now, I can see it in commercial, no problem.
It may, well, right, if you go to certain counties, they allow it in agritourism, you go to certain places, it's allowed in manufacturing. But it may be where we allow it in all three. R1, if it's R1, it's R1, right, as I'm saying, it's R1, but like manufacturing or agritourism, you know. Or, like you said, any commercial.
So what you're telling me is if I live in Pine Lake and I want to start a brewery on Chatham Lake.
No, 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 just because you're zoned at that district, doesn't mean you get to do it in that district. You've got to go through the process, and they would not draw five, they don't have the room, they don't have to.
Yeah, there's more to it.
Yes.
That's why they couldn't do one in Pine Lake either.
It was gonna require a special use.
It's gonna have to require a special use permit of some sort to get the, cause you're gonna have to one before you get the alcohol license type thing, you know. So, so like our, we have one now, you have to have the zoning in place before you can get the alcohol for it.
To our fifty percent rule and an diligent listing, we found it. So in section three eighteen, the fifty percent requirement is under farmer's market, not agritourism.
Yeah, well, farmer's market is under agritourism.
Is under agritourism piece, but the specific requirement is that for a farmer's market, a minimum of fifty percent of agricultural products available for purchase by consumers shall be grown on the farm.
That's in the current, in the new?
That's, that's been the standard, it's been under, under the heading of farmer's market.
That's right.
So the question is, do we want to keep that or next that, or change it?
Something that should be, should be grown there on the farm, maybe not fifty percent.
Do you, I mean.
And like you said, there's no way to enforce it.
Right.
Except if you go in and pick up everything, it also says made in Taiwan or China. Yes.
Then the consumer decides.
If you drop it to twenty-five percent, you still have a stipulation there, it lowers it, but again, who's gonna go out there and start picking up everything on grown by Susan Andrews, grown by China?
Right.
You know, but at least, you have something in there if you need it, but twenty-five, I think is a lot better than fifty.
Would like to add something.
What's that?
I mean, I would like to add something from the farmer's market occasionally, that I don't grow, but it sells good, and put it beside my stuff.
I don't, I don't think it needs to be, I mean, it's, it's just hard and forceful. They can send it out to the government.
As long as you're growing, as long as you're selling things related to the farm. You know what I'm saying? It's not, if I'm having stories.
So we're gonna remove section three eighteen C, which is that provision about minimum product sold.
I know.
And it's, I, well, at least that you're correct, status, it's unenforceable. So how about, how about if you go inspect?
Just take the whole thing out.
Yeah.
Just take it all in, don't worry about it.
Yeah, just delete.
Alright.
If they make him, I go if they make him.
You can do that.
I've already got that.
Alright, so we're working on that.
I've got that covered. Okay, so in the last fifteen minutes, under the other general miscellaneous comments, um, okay, those two are comments back and forth, first two back and forth on the two acre standard. There's a comment about minimum acreage size requirement for creating a new commercial zone, being too high, should be reduced from four acres to one or two acres.
When you say that, I mean, you could do.
Third bullet point, I think it's under E.
Right, if it's attached to another one, uh, attached to commercial, yes, your intent is to grow your commercial around commercial.
You gotta start at somewhere.
But, but what I'm seeing is, what you don't wanna do is offer somebody to be able to put a one acre car lot out in the middle of Charlotte or out in the middle of Pine Mountain Valley, that's, you know, if it's already owned for us, then fine, but if it's not, it needs to be a minimum of four acres, and then you grow from that.
And then they could, they can have multiple businesses.
If you're creating a new zone, that's all, I mean, that's four acres applies to anything.
Yes. That's what currently requires.
Right.
Yeah, we didn't make any changes. So what's, what's the ruling right now, how, how the general pop up on, on one acre, two acre lots?
It's already owned, every lot, they say building one is already owned commercial, every one of them. They didn't have to rezone any of theirs.
That massive white lot right there was commercial?
Yes, ma'am. They're a commercial across the street. That's, that's what we're dealing with right now at Mill Glen, is a prime example where people did not know that in front of their property was on commercial. And you got one side that's on C3 and has to get a special use, you got the other side, people were rushing to do A1 or whatever.
Yeah.
I've got a thousand phone calls on that in the last week.
Oh, well, Mill Glen, they're cleared, I mean, are they cleared before they're filled, ma'am?
For the left side, yes, ma'am. But if they do decide later on, people wanna know, are we gonna get the chance to say what you got? No, ma'am, you're not, just say four.
As long as it's C4.
It is what it is.
Any C4 you can do there.
And that's what's happening, is realtors are doing their homework.
Buyers are not doing their homework.
Buyers, that's, that's, that's right too, they're not doing their homework either.
What if they don't do diligence anymore?
Nobody does their own.
At, at some point, you must have personal, I mean, it's personal responsibility.
That's right, if you have personal responsibility, you're.
So leave commercial at four acres.
And that's your fault.
Yes, yes, our fault.
Somebody stop lying, it's your fault, or it's your fault, or it's your fault, or it's your.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think that's just.
We can change it.
You know, you're not.
Because if you go, you talk about Pine Mountain Valley, well, if you go to Oak Mountain, at the end of Oak Mountain Road and Baker Road, there used to be a store that sat right there, and I guarantee you that that's still considered commercial, and it ain't four acres. Now, I know, I'm not talking to grandpa, I'm saying, so.
No, so you get actually.
Back in the day, in our county, you had little stores all around.
Right, and they're still zone C4.
I know, but what I'm saying is, is if we go to four.
We've been, no, we are.
No, 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 no.
We are.
That's what I'm saying, if we go back down to two.
No, 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 listen to me, if that is already zone four, if the corner you're talking about, if that's already zone C4, C3, C1, whatever, it's on commercial, so, it's a, it's a half an acre lot, but it's already zone C4, well, all I gotta do is I can add a quarter acre to that and have, make that C4 as well.
This is, this is.
And all I have to do is.
That's getting re-zoned.
You go out and only A1 land.
You know, the only drawback, I value to do it four acres, is you're taking away from any small business owner. And you're, you're hurting anybody local that wants to open a local shop, and now you're just looking at.
Okay, now, I'm gonna play devil's advocate here, we want ten acres for rural area, but we gonna let them throw a two acre commercial lot in the middle of all of it?
Well, I didn't say right in the middle, but again, I might, I might have said further, that's their mind with those.
Higher subdivision, no review approval versus something that requires.
I'm just talking about two acre lot, if we all go require two acres for commercial.
And there's already a two acre lot out there somewhere around agriculture.
The comparison is five acre lot, because that would be a rezoning scenario with board commissioners. Gotta keep things straight.
It doesn't matter, I mean, it shows, y'all are.
Well, Sam, that's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, if you had that little lot, which is, probably still is on commercial, let's say you got rezoned, and all of a sudden I decide, you know what, I wanna put a store by there that used to always be there, I can't do it, cause I can't rezone it back to commercial.
Right, if it was, if it was changed.
Right, as I'm saying, and, and, but I know it's probably two acres, if you added two acres, then I could reset back to commercial. But I'm thinking about it.
Now, the other thing you also.
Because I can bring, I can have Susan come sell her produce and store, we good to go.
Again, when it comes to commercial, and we're still, a lot of places are still on seven, no sewer. So you're still gonna be at least a one acre anyway.
Right.
Take it to two, cut it down.
That was the recommendation or the, I think it was Mr. Breedhogg who got the comment, but.
It's because he does that.
Yeah, that's right.
To two.
If you all, I mean, now, remember, this is only set in this as a zoning district.
Yeah.
Not to carve out and have a business there.
Right.
And it will still have to have planning commission, everything still.
If it has to be rezoned.
This is really, this is about eligibility to apply, as it's written now, if you don't have four acres, you're not eligible to apply.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so if you had two, in fact, it makes you eligible.
That's what we're talking about, so we'll, we can make that up.
Okay. Two acres.
Well, you probably gonna have to have two acres with a sector tag.
Oh, yeah.
I think you ought to at least do two.
If you have, like, the old Oliver's Grocery, they wanted to put, what, three businesses there, but there's not room there for three sector tags. They're all chapped out there on sector tag, so you probably need at least two.
And that's a one acre lot.
Yeah.
That sits in the front.
So we change it to four two.
That's a borderline.
It's borderline.
Next bullet point is something we'll, we'll simply take care of confirming that the language we got at UDC matches the new official state policy.
Okay.
So then we get to PRD district, uh, we, you got different comments, public comments about. PRD district does summarize there. And I, I simply posed the question, do we need to do anything, make any changes to PRD district?
No.
I would put it inactive.
The requirements, the requirements.
I would agree.
For the commercial, what, what was that again? You've got to have, I thought the requirements were kind of off.
I think it's seventy, it is seventy-five percent.
I agree, um.
Oh, gosh, I don't even know where we are now.
You've gotta have commercial.
Well, here it's gotta be a hundred percent in before you can. Yeah, if you're, if you're a company, if you're a business owner, you're not gonna go out there and say, if I build it, then it'll come.
Absolutely, you look at Midland Development right there at, um.
Gateway and all that.
Yeah, Gateway, where Trax fly and the Zelmos and you, that's been being built out for several years now. You are just now getting the commercial to say, oh, we're gonna rent it a restaurant there, cause they see the house is coming. And it'll be more once it's all built out, but I don't think, there's no way in the world you're gonna get a commercial to commit before you.
So here's, here's how it reads currently, is the, the actual wording on this, so section five oh six, oh two, C two and three. C two. C two says a minimum of ten percent, and that's revised up from eight percent, of the net development area shall be designated for C one or C three commercial development. This is in PRD.
Designated.
Designated for, that's, 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 that's two. And this has all been there. This area may be set in reserve with natural vegetation until such time the commercial development is feasible, yet shall be easily accessible by pedestrian, through traffic, et cetera, et cetera. So that's what has been there. We just increased it from eight to ten percent. What we added to the point of trying to, I guess, close any loophole where somebody says we're going to do commercial, but in the end they don't. We added three. To ensure completion of the required commercial component, a PRD development must be phased as described below. Twenty-five percent of planned residential units may be constructed prior to fifty percent completion of commercial construction. And no more residential units shall be constructed until fifty percent of commercial development is completed. One hundred percent of commercial development shall be completed prior to seventy-five percent residential completion.
The law provides commercial.
That's right.
We control commercial. But we don't control.
We need a commercial to help offset taxes.
We understand that.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is you can't, you can't mandate.
No, you can't.
Misses me here first. I mean, we're, we're shutting down business.
Possesses one. Yes, exactly, rooftops.
Not necessarily. Cause I mean, okay, I.
No, yeah, you're right.
Okay, well, hold up. When we're doing PRDs in itself, PRDs, the main point of PRD itself is the planned development is to be able to bring in that commercial aspect to help us offset the rooftops. That's the commercial draw, that's the commercial item that we're looking for from a tax standpoint.
It's the PCD. Okay, what happens? What, the economy also drives.
Yes, it has. That's what we're looking at with.
But here's the thing.
With the, with the CUPD we have now, we don't have the commercial in place that we think we're going to have right this second. We don't see it. Eventually.
Yeah, I think we will.
Okay, but when is that? What I'm saying is, is that going to be a year? Is it going to be twenty-four months? Is it going to be thirty-six months?
You can't dictate. I think the market.
That's the reason why this is a test.
The PRD is not a CUPD.
Right.
Different animals.
So I hope it's a PRD, not a CUPD.
No, the road is a CUPD.
Okay, so that's what I'm saying. About that, we're talking about.
And a PRD is primarily residential.
Right.
The CUPD is primarily commercial.
So we're saying PRD is ninety percent residential, ten percent commercial. That's the baseline for what needs to be comprised. And then we're saying that, because PRD is different than just the subdivision.
Right.
By definition.
Five years ago, and I've already told the story fifteen times more, five years ago, I met with a, an executive from Publix. And I said, we would love to have Publix in Harris County. He looked me in the eye and he said, Ms. Banky, we would love to have a presence in Harris County, but we have to have.
Little rooftops.
Absolutely.
Every, every.
That's why you set it aside, but what we've done in the past, and I know we've done it one time, I don't know. Is that we let the development then come back and suck that, set aside back into residential. We did that. We're, we do that somewhere.
Where, do you say that there's.
There was some.
I know that we've never done that, but we have not required them to get commercial.
Right.
Yeah, I don't think.
All they did was build out the.
Right, but I think you continue keeping that set aside and.
Yeah, yeah, keep an area.
And I think that we do some things like maybe what we do with the, um, business parks is repair that land better. I mean, right down there in Midland, they're putting in the infrastructure for commercial. They don't know what's coming. They don't know if it's going to be a hamburger joint or a Dollar General. But they're putting in the infrastructure. And so I think we should require the infrastructure at some point, some level to be put in. Now, Bobby, finish your sentence, please. I think we all interrupted you.
No, no, I tell you, I lost my train. Stuff going on. But what I'm saying is, this is supposed to be, you know, kind of going back to my point, like the basis of my point. If we're trying to bring in the commercial and we're trying to do that with a test and the test itself was, you know, the CUPD we're pushing in to bring in that commercial off of that corridor, which is exit nineteen, which is off of point eight five. That's what we're trying to bring in, but we're not seeing it yet because I think the market itself, like you said, is going to dictate that. But the trending that we're seeing is a slowdown of brick and mortar. We definitely are. So what I'm saying is, is until we can understand how we're going to bring this in, shoving more of it out there or keeping this on the table, that we're going to push it more out there. To fix the purpose of trying to figure out what ramifications, the cost measures to the county, to the county services, to what we're going to do for the baseline budget. We've got to figure out what that test looks like completely built out. We don't know what the growth is going to completely cost us at the end. We don't. You can't tell me what that's going to cost. You can't even tell me what the cost of the water is.
The cost of the water.
The water.
So that's your justification for wanting to put it in inactive?
Hundred percent.
Okay, that's where I went to go. And I think I agree with that, too.
But that's, you're talking about putting PRD inactive, the Grove and PRD, that's the, is the same.
PRD has to be built where there's utilities available because communities have a lot of.
Which makes sure.
That's why it's.
That's why the sewer was brought. That's why the sewer was brought in. That's why the.
Yeah, but I'm just saying that the PRD is, and the Grove are two different things because it ain't a PRD. And I think we can all agree the way that was great by the county, it's not.
Crossed, but instead of, they get the fact that it's going to cost us, we got two.
But that's because.
If PRD were made in, are you good with the ninety, ten?
Yes.
Are you good with the percentage of what has to be built at the certain time it has to be built?
Oh, not those percentages like.
Yeah, what I heard was. What I heard was leaning more towards ensuring that the ten percent.
That's not.
Commercial.
Whatever.
Harvest buildings are residential.
But can you come back twenty years later and say, well, no commercials come, so let us build houses and stuff like that?
Now, I, I can say from experience that other communities do have these types of staging requirements. So that's not a unique thing. But what I hear you saying is, that's not a lever we want to pull here.
I think the timeline for, for a big community, I think Harris County itself is very unique. It's not, you know, residential. I mean, I just don't think we have, I don't think we can set those restrictions. Very little. It says ten percent.
Yeah, yeah, no, I agree with that. The Grove's going to build out, a commercial is coming.
Yeah.
I think that they'll come, I think people who have.
Have been.
Have been against it will enjoy those amenities as well.
I think if we had Negan and Velver, we would have gotten some things already as a person. Next. Like Remington.
Let me say this. There, there are people who are saying, and I hate to say this on social media, there's no commercial coming to the Grove.
They don't know that. They don't know that, and we don't know that. We believe they are. There are.
Well, I, I will say this, that, that, yes, there are, there has been, and there are ongoing talks for commercial, but they can't put that out there.
That's right.
You will deep six a commercial, a, a project if you make everything public.
Already lost, probably three, the commercials. Already lost.
So we don't know, but I do know that there are negotiations and talks centered around commercial. But the developer cannot afford to make it public. And neither can we.
In fact, it's simple homework assignment. I've got my work to do, basically everything. I said, the last, last little bit of the last page of this, under uses, there's four, four bullet points. So I can certainly stay and discuss if you'd like, or, or you can simply give a comment on those.
Do I, man?
The last four bullet points.
Chickens and residential.
Yeah, food trucks and uses.
Yeah, the one, the biggest one I have with food trucks, I don't think they need to be a special use permit, be asked to be. In my opinion, I think that needs to be, they need to come in, get a business license. They need to, I mean.
They already have that.
The food trucks, they just, they don't need a special use to be allowed to be used. Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Use the business license. Um, but what I'm saying is, it says right now, to be able to keep it overnight in residential property in A one or R, right? So.
That's because we have a lot of food trucks that have business licenses outside of our county that come in here.
Yeah, that's true.
So they're bringing, what I think what that was for is they're coming from Muskogee and then leaving them in a residential area. They don't have the business license from us. Cause right now, if you have a business license from wherever.
They live here, but they.
You can bring your food truck up.
During the day, but what this is specifically talking about. Where a food truck operates during the day is not a zoning.
This is, this is to bring it up here and leave.
The zoning question is, where is the, where, where's the base?
What's the home occupation?
Food trucks have to live somewhere at night. So either it's in someone's driveway or garage, or it's on a commercial lot somewhere. That's the question here. Is there.
That's what I'm talking about.
Right. I gotta look back and, there was something else to that. And then I guess the notion is.
I don't, your own brother, I'm just saying. What's the difference between not in a different commercial vehicle? If we have an employee who takes the county vehicle, huh?
Well, food trucks a lot.
It's a lot bigger, but it's still a commercial.
Arguably, there's some.
But if somebody has a work van that they take.
Well, here's an example. If you've got a prior and a food, if you've got a prior and a food truck, you're dealing with the grease somewhere somehow. And if you've got it parked in your driveway, more.
Light with a lot more smell and.
Yeah.
Contamination.
Not really contamination, just smell and creatures.
Of course, you go back to Brian's theory. Most HOAs have it where you can't have them in there anywhere.
But the point is.
You can't have both parked in the front yard. So, I mean, you know what I'm saying? You can't have.
I guess the argument in favor of requiring a special use permit for someone to park a food truck on their A one or R, or property is that there's a wide variety of A one properties. A one property can be a relatively small lot, surrounded by homes. A one property can be out in the middle of nowhere, surrounded by acres. So each one would seem to warrant, you know, a specific review.
Right now, and with our home occupation, if you have a, even if you're two acres on A one, you can't park your. Let's just say I wanted to run a tree service business. I can't park my vehicles there. I have to have a minimum of five in order to park certain sized vehicles. That's written in our ordinance that came, was introduced, what, maybe six or seven years ago by the planning commission, and it has stood well. And it helps alleviate a lot of problems. And you come in with the same thing with the food truck. You start sticking those in residential, I'm going to give you phone calls. We're off the bat, guaranteed. I would say it needs to, I wouldn't mind it being allowed in A one, but it needs to be a rural residential home occupation, which requires five acres.
You were saying in Kokalee, right?
Or covenant, or, um, or.
Yeah, but they, they, they don't have.
They don't have us.
They don't have.
Because when our companies were wrong, there was no such thing as.
That's right. There wasn't no such thing as a food truck.
Okay. Can you guys see this? Chickens and residential, anybody?
What was the deal? Chickens?
You know, we, as Columbus allows them.
That.
In certain areas.
They allow. Hens, not roosters. And they only allow up to five.
Okay, and there again, there's more enforcement. We did look.
My time, I said, so the, the issue is, we don't have them. Don't have really business on R one, or we talking about.
We talked about it.
R, R one.
Do what you want, man. We basically talking about R one.
Yeah, but R one, if you're sitting off the thirty fifteen, like you said, you sit on ten acres of land and you're sitting there telling me I can't have chickens on my ten acres of land in the middle of nowhere?
Or you take Ripshin Road. Ripshin Road has hundreds of acres that's on A one, individual R, R one, that's zone R one and, and this large property, large drive. But if I got a complaint and somebody said, he's got chickens, well, we have to go say, I'm sorry, you're zoned R one, you can't have chickens.
Correct. And I'm in that issue.
Now, again, again, if you wanted to go R one, my thing is, if you're zoned R one, is you ought to know what you're getting into. My.
It's regulated, don't say.
And if you want to be A one or R R, five acres, you can have chickens.
We'll say R one, anything else.
So R one gets a little tricky.
I think R one gets a bit tricky. Because I should have the right, I should have the right not to live next door to chickens.
Exactly.
Then what if you, what if you get.
And if I'm not one, I can live there.
And I can live there.
And if you want chickens, you can have chickens.
Can you have a three dollar?
I agree.
On your two acres.
I agree. Or, or, or you could do it on R.
And I think that. I don't, is it on?
No.
The reason, you know, and the reason you don't want to allow chickens in R one is simply because you, you take some of the subdivisions that we're coming up with that have a two acre lot, like I live in Elders Place, I, I live on an acre and a half. Two doors down from me, they got seven acres. So are we going to allow somebody in R one with five acres to have chickens?
No, I agree with that.
If you're in R one.
You should not be able to.
You should, you should do your due diligence and figure it out.
I agree.
It says A one and R R only.
Mm-hmm.
Back to the food trucks question really quickly. Um, pork commercial, pork commercial, okay. Food trucks, as the, as the table currently shows, and I think this is what the commenter was pointing out, and I think she has a point. Food trucks show up in the accessory and temporary use table with a footnote that says food trucks can operate anywhere for temporary events, et cetera. There you go. So this is, yeah. So this is about where the food trucks park at night as an accessory use. They're not the principal use. They're, they're with a house or a business or whatever it is. So we require, as it is drafted here, require special use in A one, R R, but it's allowed in R one, R two, R three, uh, and A O.
Should be.
Should not be. I think it should be. I think we got things that.
It should be a special use of those, the last.
So it should be special use in any of the R districts is what I'm hearing. Um, allowable in your C district, C one, three and two, which is a commercial property. That's the associated restaurant, et cetera. I don't know, Resort and Core, did we?
Not Resort.
Not Resort.
And Core. We're talking about food trucks?
Yeah.
Core's a camp, I mean.
Core's a category.
Yeah, that's, no, I would say, I mean, it could be allowed there, yes, but you couldn't leave that, you can park it, no. I would not say Core.
And then back to A one and R R, allowable or special use for the side.
A one and R R?
I think we decided it's special use. It's a special use. I mean, very.
Calway?
Yeah, that's a special.
The food trucks are Calway.
Parked over there.
Yeah, Calway is called Resort or Calway Resort.
Section of the resort is in Pine Mountain. Oh, is it in, is it always in?
I would think a food truck is a normal, reasonable function these days.
Round Hills is a resort. Yes, it is.
Piedmont Lake is a resort.
Yes, it is.
There's difference between what is a resort and what is some.
Yes. Calway Gardens is your, is your normal resort.
Yeah, what I'm saying is.
The other ones were.
Oh, I'm going there right now.
Anyway, yes, our, it's a resort.
We have to get into.
Well, I'm saying, you know, if you're saying Calway Resort in Pine Mountain, that's a different thing. Whether people, Piedmont want to bring in a food truck to leave it overnight for a Halloween function or something, we're saying they can.
Yeah, they can bring it in for that occasion. They just can't park it there as, as, I can't see a residence there and park it there at my residence, okay?
You can park it overnight for a weekend event.
We're, we're going to think through this one. We're going to work out a logical approach and the key factor is going to be avoiding residential nuisances.
I agree. That's, yeah, that's the key.
The thing with residential nuisances, that takes us to short-term vacation.
Yes, it does.
Yes, it does.
Taking out the parking enforcement and the.
I know.
Parking enforcement and the.
I don't know how you enforce any of that.
How do you enforce?
And obviously, that's, that's all part of your country.
How can we?
That's no different than us telling you, you can't have three cars in your parking lot. You have to bring it in out over the weekend.
I got Piedmont Lake parking side where I drive for seventy-two hours, just walk into the parking.
Yeah, we should do this.
Yeah, because how can we enforce that?
I see when it becomes simple, like.
It's a contract. You gotta.
You know what I'm saying?
But that's when the sheriff's department has to step in.
Only if they're doing something.
I got to get out of here.
That's when the sheriff's department has to step in. Somebody called, I mean, people called me and said that I had phone calls this summer. There was a certain place on Backwaters where they were having a party just about every weekend. Okay, what am I going to do about it? Well, they got a lot of vans. Okay, their, their house with their own private party, I can't do a thing about it.
I think that would be too much.
So we're, okay.
And it's the same thing with short.
Yeah, but if I'm devil's advocate, we don't want somebody parking a food truck in a residential because you complained about the smell. But now if I'm VRBO and I can have a van playing on light and the noise keeping the neighborhood.
That would be.
No, that would be up to the, not for us to enforce it, but the owner. No, that would be up to the, not for us to enforce it, but the owner to have it in his country.
Or the owner, it's, it's private property.
It's private property. I don't see how we can come in...
I don't know how you could legally do that.
If that's written in the contract and that rental agreement, couldn't they take that to the sheriff's department and say, "Hey, look, this is a violation"?
No.
No, they did, and the sheriff didn't do anything about it.
The sheriff would only enforce things that are illegal activities.
Like no noise.
Noise ordinance and non-illegal activities, only that way, and then your...
The only way they could've done it is, they have to go out there and say, "Y'all have violated the contract," and ask them to leave, and then they don't leave, and then they go to the sheriff and say, "These people are trespassing."
But then you gotta deal with the judge, you know, when he doesn't do it.
Yeah. Dogs, parking...
I'm sure other STBRs take, have these issues too.
It's, it's sort of the same with the law term, almost like my rules, you know, whenever we get there, industry only have property management and handle.
Right. And they have somebody of contact.
Yes.
To...
The thing is, if you do the, hire a regulated cars, well, you know, you got somebody that's got a cabin that's sitting out in the middle of twenty acres, but how you gonna drive out there and figure out, make out more than four cars?
Yeah, was it, was, correct, correct me if I'm wrong, right? Wasn't there also the recommendation by the planning commission that these be registered? But they need to, because they're supposed to report to your hotel...
Now, here's the problem, though. We have found out that you take Airbnb or what's another one.
Yeah.
Well, Airbnb, Airbnb, that any of those companies...
They're supposed to collect.
They collect, they do collect it, but guess what? It goes to the cities.
Now, if they're not in the cities?
Uh-uh, it goes to the cities, the zip codes. It does not go to the county government. We found that out about a month ago, when you...
That's like, that's like we have subdivision off of this field, right? So, in that case...
So, anything out there on backwaters that was being rented would be, guess where that money would go?
Yeah, Hamilton.
Got to the county.
So, have we approached, have we taken...
We need to approach municipalities about that.
We have to, we would have to.
There's, there's, as far as I know, maybe, correct me if I'm wrong, we don't collect any revenue on, on Airbnb's. We have two or three on our list, oh, two or three.
Yeah.
That we know of.
That are out there.
That self-reports.
Right.
But if that revenue's going to the cities, then we can find that and be able to ask for that.
We should be able to...
That's part of the problem that we found out about a month ago.
And it may, well, we, yeah.
We might be able to get everything.
Well, some, yeah.
That'd be a discussion with the, maybe the mayor or the city, or the clerks to ask what they're getting in, and if they're getting it from outside of their boundaries.
How is a track though, if it's just a zip code? I mean, that's a...
That's what they do, they attach it to a zip code.
That's all it is.
And it goes, so it would go to the city and nothing comes to the county.
No, but they would know, if they, if you get a check, a check from somebody out in the backwaters, so the backwaters is not in the city limits of the...
They would be coming from the RV.
But I think now, this, this...
It would break down what property addresses came from, because then they have to detect back to the property.
It should.
Yes, it should.
But then they look at the city of that property, even if it says Hamilton, out in the backwaters, it's Hamilton. So, it's totally Hamilton.
It would, not, the county wouldn't get anything.
So, doesn't Fortson have its own zip code?
Yes.
Yes.
It ain't the cities, so where does that go?
Post office.
Post office.
I mean, I'm just saying, you know, if we're saying cities, well, they...
No, 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 Fortson's not, and Fortson's not corporate.
I know, I'm just saying, that's not my point, they have five cities in there, but we got a lot of places that got their own post office.
So, they can't even...
I mean, Piney Mountain Valley, is it going to Scotty Moore?
I don't, I don't remember.
Those are broken, like, it's like...
It got a new truck, that's why.
The county has got fifteen thousand zip codes, and y'all have cities, and that's, you know.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, we're saying it's going to cities, but some of them that's in Piney Mountain Valley or Fortson, they not some cities.
Back to the enforcement part on the, on the parking in the bedrooms.
Yeah, no, we can enforce that.
How is there, what's something we could do? If you looked online and just seen everything that's going on with these places, oh, it's a dangerous, a dangerous thing.
We, our county enforcement officer doesn't have, he's not authorized to carry a gun, so he couldn't go out there and enforce them. And the sheriff won't do it because they're not doing anything illegal.
But two, the county goes by the due diligence, so I mean, you're going out there, that's your tenant, that's your tenant, that's your, that's your product, right? You're making the money off of it, the county's not the tax tax.
Well, as I, I mean...
Any sort of the problem. Agreeing with that, a provision we have in Article Three is, Jay, the property owner shall be responsible for setting and enforcing occupancy requirements.
Okay. Yeah, but if you add the part about one car for the first bedroom, two cars for the first bedroom, one car for the next bedroom...
That's not, that's not in the UDC of...
No, but that was, that was, right. That's, yes, that was, that's what we're saying, no tip.
But I see it's paid, though, what he said, he did.
So, do we want to... When it comes to any kind of short-term vacation rental, we want them to register with the county. Well, that's what I'm saying, why register and just give a business license? Make them, if they're earning money, make them give business license.
And that to me, right now, I'm just saying, I don't think they give you a license to, to VRBO, just like...
Most of them require, some of them require. Because I had a guy call me the other day, and he says, "I wanna do a short-term vacation rental," and I said, "Well, we don't regulate them." "Well, I need a business license." "Well, I can't give you one." Because we don't regulate them right now. If we were to put this into the ordinance, now we can offer them, right?
Okay.
A license for them.
But we would also go after, because I did find this out, I had a guy that, is that still? Anyway, there was a situation.
Should run along.
There was a situation where somebody has a business license, and we found out that they were using campers on their property as open road state. That is a campground.
Yes.
Yeah.
And when I called him, I got chewed out. So, we have removed, he said, "I'm moving anyway," so we have removed his business license. Now, at this point, I'm gonna say, "You need to cease operation, or we're gonna take it to court."
All operations are...
No, can't, 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 can't operate, you can't have people staying in campers on his own.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I know.
And see, the idea, what he, all, what he got the business license for, for was to go and set a campground, or to go to the racetrack and set that up so that you could bring it out, and then they go, pick it up, take it back home.
Yeah.
Now, it's really not a problem, and that also is a huge problem.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so...
All right. Is there, my last question, is there anything that you had on your checklist coming in here that we have not, uh...
I'll block.
No, no, it's all right. Good.
Oh, thank you, I'm gonna say...
The face.
I think that's good for the table support.
So, what is our next meeting? Are we gonna shoot for any time in December?
Well, that'd be tomorrow, I believe.
I think what you're gonna do, what do you mean shoot for any time?
Anytime in December to have another discussion.
Oh, like for this thing, not the public...
No, 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 for this.